They got away.
Okay. Started. Uh, welcome everyone to the planning town of water for planning and zoning commission meeting of February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. This is a web based meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. The video recording will be available within twenty four hours and will be posted on the town of Waterford's planning department website. To ensure good sound quality. The default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or video disruption, the zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not be using the chat feature in this meeting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comment will not be accepted after the gearing is closed. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, we call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three between the hours of eight AM and four PM. Monday through Friday. And with that, I turn over to the chair.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning and zoning committee meeting for February twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Should be a fairly quick meeting, I think. So let's do item number one. Call to order. It looks like there's myself, Tim Condorino, Tim Please Dale, Victor Eversol. And we'll put indoors Crum for Karen. Okay, Doris? Okay, great. Um, approve any of, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting?
I'll motion that.
A motion made by Doris, seconded by.
I'll second Doris's motion.
Seconded by Victor, all in favor of approving the minutes, January twenty third, twenty twenty four, by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor. Uh, item number three is application receipt uh for number PL twenty four dash four. Request of congregation Beth L. Owners and applicant for site plan approval to locate a religious establishment at property. Located at thirty three Canyon Road, R twenty zone as shown on plans entitled congregation Beth L. Thirty three Canyon Road, Waterford, Connecticut, July twenty uh twenty three. Application was received two thirteen twenty twenty four. And we have an application of the tunnel of the water planning and zoning commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one. Definitions daycare comma child application was received on one nine twenty twenty four. Um, item number four is a public hearing for the application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one. Definitions daycare child. If we, is there any member of the public that wishes to uh address the commission this evening with respect to those zoning regulation changes? Okay, so I don't see anybody at the moment, so I'm just gonna move that to a little later so that we could take the application of Beth L. So that they can move on with their evening and we can take care of our business afterwards. Well, so let's go to item number five, application review of PL twenty four dash four, request of congregation Beth L. Owners and applicant for site plan approval to locate a religious establishment at property located thirty three Canyon Road. Our twenty zone as shown on plans entitled congregation Beth L. Thirty three Canyon Road, Waterford, Connecticut, July twenty twenty three. Okay, uh, who's here for the applicant?
Wayne Garrick is here. He's our architect. Speak for us.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Wayne Garrick. Uh, I'm the architect for the project. And uh, along with me is, I believe, the president of the congregation, Michael Cohen. And Ed Goldberg, who is chairman of the building committee. We had our presentation earlier this afternoon uh to the design review board. And all went well. It was unanimously approved. And as you may know, we have the approval of the conservation commission as well. Um, this is, I was retained to uh design this project approximately a year and a half ago. And um, it was a wonderful experience to collaborate with the members of the synagogue. And um, also at last January with the various representatives of the town. And uh, together, we've produced this project, which we feel is quite responsive to to the site, uh, to the neighborhood and to the town overall. As you know, uh, congregation Beth L. Uh, began exactly a hundred years ago. Uh, which is remarkable and nice and a wonderful celebration. And they maintained for many, many years a, an extremely large facility on Ocean Avenue in New London. But it became apparent uh several years ago that uh membership was declining. And the ability to support that type of facility uh became more and more difficult. So they um went ahead and they purchased this property at thirty three Canyon Road. Which uh has a certain amount of uh wetlands to it. Yeah, but the nice thing about the property, as I'm sure you know, as the planning and zoning board is that a religious institution is a permitted use at this property. And we have uh designed a project here with several considerations in mind. Uh, but those considerations include that we have uh satisfied uh all of the setback uh coverage, parking and height requirements is required in the zoning regulations. There's nothing uh nonconforming about our proposal. Uh, starting with the design of the project. Um, as you may know, the neighborhood is a very nice neighborhood. And it consists of mostly single family residences that uh range in size from sixteen hundred to perhaps twenty two hundred to twenty four hundred square feet. The size of this facility, it's uh broken up, as you can see by the drawings into a variety of forms. But overall, the project represents thirty eight hundred square feet plus the small twelve by sixteen uh storage building off the terrace. We, we explored uh initially uh looking at possibly locating the facility uh at the front portion of the property. And actually, some members were very much in favor of it because we wouldn't have to run the utilities uh the length of the site virtually when it came to underground service for the power and the water and the sewer, but um we felt that uh for the purpose of scale and proportion of the neighborhood, it would be best if we located the building toward the rear of the property in, in order to eliminate basically any presence or uh introducing a building slightly larger than some of the homes uh along the road. So that was a major consideration in locating the building at the rear of the property. The second uh consideration, which is uh prevalent in not only the site plan, but also the building plans themselves is that um for security purposes, as you know, in this day and age, um we felt that by locating the building toward the rear of the property, uh, it was less likely that uh the, the congregation could be subject to uh some sort of violence or vandalism uh being, having a presence that was toward the rear of the property would become that much more difficult for somebody to uh do something like that. It's uh unfortunate. We have to think that way today, but uh it's better to anticipate than uh than not. Um, the building is consists of uh two pavilions. Uh, the main pavilion on one on the east, which faces east uh is the sanctuary. The dimensions of the sanctuary are thirty six feet by thirty six feet. As we discussed uh in the design review board meeting, um the number eighteen, as uh Mr. Goldberg so explained, is a significant number in the Jewish religion in that it represents uh life and uh good luck. So um the main uh pavilion of the building, uh, the sanctuary is thirty six feet by thirty six feet. As is the administrative pavilion, it's the same. Every dimension in this building is a factor of the dimension uh eighteen could be thirty six, could be twelve. Uh, but it's, but it is a factor. The sanctuary naturally faces east. Uh, that's how most synagogues are designed, uh, and uh in addition to the two pavilions, there is a uh section of the building on the western side, which contains a kitchen, small kitchen and a storage room. There's a main entry to the building and then a transition space between the sanctuary and the kitchen storage area. The reason for the transition space is to accommodate some overflow seating. While the sanctuary is designed to be flexible. That is the Bima or lectern from which the uh rabbi conducts the service along with members. It can be, it's, it's movable so that uh on, in the event that there's a small uh group of people, the Bima can be in the center of the sanctuary and the chairs arranged around it. Uh, there's no fixed seating so that uh the service can be more intimate. Or it can be moved back toward the arc of the sanctuary so that more seating can be introduced and um in the event that there are more than, that seating is approximately ninety chairs. In the event that uh more people are there, we can open the wall between the sanctuary and the transition space uh to accommodate approximately twenty to twenty five more people. Um, another aspect to the building is if looking at the plans, if you were to look at them, uh, every space uh, and for, again, in the name of security, has uh two means of egress. The sanctuary actually has three. Uh, the administ-, every room in the administrative building has two. And walls, as do the other spaces, such as the entry, has two means of egress. The transition space has two means of egress. This was a deliberate uh part of the design so that in the event there was some form of emergency, people would have alternate routes uh of escape from the building. One nice feature that I think is um part of this project is uh at the entry there, you'll see on the plan number two, that's the main entry walk uh to its left. Uh, we have proposed the planting uh number seven there of six cedar trees. Those six trees represent the six million people who perished in the Holocaust. That's sort of our, and uh maybe depressing to a certain degree, but that's, that's a reminder for all who come to the synagogue. But we've kept everything else fairly low key. Uh, the sculpture in the center of the turnaround is, is very flat. There's nothing standing up. There's no signage on the buildings per se. And at this time, there's no signage proposed for the, for even at the end of the driveway. Speaking of which, we uh satisfy, as I mentioned, the parking regulations. Uh, we do have one space for every three seats of the synagogue and um in our discussions with the conservation commission, we do have uh some ten percent overflow parking, which is noted as number twelve on your uh site plan there. Uh, the building itself is uh contemporary in nature. As I mentioned, it's divided up into uh various forms in order to minimize the scale. It's uh very residential in scale. It's one story slab on grade. There's no basement. And um even while though it has vertical siding to it, the proposed palette is uh white vertical siding with a charcoal roof, which is um very consistent uh with uh the palette for New England religious institutions since probably the sixteen hundreds. So there's some historic reference here. Each uh pavilion has a cupola. They, the, and they each have twelve windows. Uh, the twelve windows in the cupola actually uh represent the twelve tribes of Israel. And um the ceiling in the sanctuary is sloped to the cupola. So uh while the walls begin at a twelve foot height, uh the slope to the cupola is quite dramatic and uh meant to be uh awe inspiring. So hopefully it will be, I'm confident it will be. Uh, so the building is uh essentially uh very, very simple, but um responding to the, the congregation's needs at this point in time and hopefully for many, many years. Uh, and again, we, we look forward to your favorable uh uh approval since uh we do conform to all of the regulations. And um, as I've mentioned, we have conservation and design review board uh approval.
Great, thank you. Um, does anybody else on your team have anything to say? I'm not sure that we need it. If we wanna try to ask questions and then they can answer them as we have them, if that's, that's okay with you.
Um, uh, maybe Ed, but I, I actually let me point out two more things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
One, one is the uh the landscape plan. Um, we have introduced, uh, you can see the trees along the western border, number eight. Uh, we're very uh much aware of our neighbor next door. We've uh proposed a beautiful buffer uh between the parking area and the uh building itself. Uh, that was very conscious. That's why we located the building where we did so that we could create this buffer. Um, we also um minimize the impact on the wetlands. Uh, we, we impacted less than a thousand square feet. That actually, if going from memory, I believe it's somewhere around eight hundred square feet. But we're uh creating a, a new wetlands uh just to the north of the building there. And uh with a variety of wetland species of eighteen hundred square feet. So we've actually increased the uh, the amount of wetlands that, that presently exist on the site. So even though we had to cross a portion of the wetlands in order to get the driveway to the back of the property, uh, we're, we're replacing that. And uh, so I would like to just point out those uh few features uh as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Is uh, can you um unshare the screen, please? Okay, thank you. So I can see everyone. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Uh, Tim Condorino? No?
No.
Victor?
I have no questions, Greg.
Tim Please Dale?
Uh, sure, yeah, more of a comment. Um, I think it looks like a, a great design and, and it's gonna be a tranquil space back there with all those trees.
Thank you.
Uh, Doris?
No comment.
Okay, um, I just have, I just have two comments uh or questions. There's a recommendation from staff that the graph, the garbage um this garbage area be fully enclosed by bushes. Any issue with that?
Uh, versus the fence? There's a fence around the trash enclosure. It's on a drawing SD five.
Okay, so it's already, that's, that's the enclosure, the trash enclosure?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure what that, okay. And then uh, is, is the um
Though we, though we could plant around it as well. That's not, I don't think the congregation would be adverse to that. I just wanted to mention, though, that there is a six foot tall uh black uh picket fence around uh the trash enclosure.
That is, um, Mr. Chair, that is what was missing from the detail sheet. So what I was
Okay, so that's, so they've already put in the screening that you recommend?
That's, well, yes, but uh they need to indicate that on their detail sheet on the site plans. In the plan set, and that's, that's why I'm making that one of, one of the conditions of approval.
Okay, and, and you're
Is the fence okay? Or do you want the plant?
Yes.
But it's, it's fine with the staff. It just depends on what the commission wants, but I, I, I don't, I don't, there were no questions on it, so I think we should be good. The other question is, uh, the sculpture, is it, do you drive over it? Can you?
No.
I mean, I know you don't want to, but I mean, is it gonna cause an accident if somebody does? How high is
It's a granite curving. It's, it's the height of granite curving.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, there's a detail uh on the section. There's a section on the sculpture. And uh, you, you can see the detail on SP one.
Yeah, so six by eighteen, that's, that's gonna be six inches high then.
Yes, yeah, it's just a regular granite curve, yes.
Okay, great. That's a nice uh addition there. That, that's very nice.
We, we did that for the uh, well, we wanted to do something in the center that would have plantings as well as sort of be a symbol of the synagogue, but at the same time, that was a response to the fire department. So that, you know, we didn't put anything vertical there. So that uh in the event of, uh, even though the building is fully sprinkler uh in, in the event of an emergency, they didn't have to worry about driving over that.
Okay. Great. I grew up around uh Beth congregation Beth L. For twenty years, uh, next door to congregation, I have a chessy, right? That's the one I'm on top. So right next to that. So this is my old stomping ground there, so. Nice congregation and a very nice project. So uh, any other questions or can we take a vote? No other questions? Somebody make a motion? Anyone wanna give it a shot?
Uh, sure. Oh, go ahead, Tim.
Make a motion to approve with modifications and conditions, site plan for congregation Beth L. Application PL twenty four dash four at thirty three Canyon Road with the modifications and conditions one and two and to adopt the findings uh one through five of the staff report.
And the staff report is dated February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Sir, a second?
A second.
I'll start.
Mo- motion made by Tim Condorino, seconded by Doris Crump. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Greg, Victor, Doris, Tim, Tim. All set, five to nothing. Um, thank you for the presentation. Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Bye, good night.
Okay, let's move on to the next item here is the public hearing for PL twenty four dash two. Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions daycare child. Um, do you wanna just explain it, Mark?
Yeah, well, first let me read the exhibit list into the record.
Okay.
Okay, um, exhibit one A is the application of nine pages. Exhibit one B is a proposed new zoning definition. Exhibit one C, Connecticut general statute, section nineteen A dash seventy seven. Now, exhibit one D is public act twenty three dash one forty two. Exhibit two is the town of Waterford zoning regulations revised through effective date of July sixth, twenty twenty three, two pages. Exhibit three, public hearing notice that was run in the day newspaper on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four and February twentieth, twenty twenty four. Exhibit four is a referral to the southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. Exhibit five is a copy of the application that was date stamped and received February fourteenth, twenty twenty four in the town clerk's office. Exhibit six is a staff report and exhibit seven is a response from the southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. So that's the exhibit list into the records.
Okay, uh, can you explain what this is?
Sure, um. Recent, recent uh legislation that was passed up in Hartford um has essentially mandated that towns in uh, that the towns in Connecticut adopt uh regulations that allow for daycares, uh child daycare to be treated the same as a single family home uh within, within the town. Uh, so what, in response to that proposed legislation, uh, this is a, a proposal to amend our town zoning regulations to comply and to be consistent with that, with the new legislation. Uh, so what we've done is essentially, we've taken the, the definition section of our regulations. Uh, looked at where uh we define where child daycare is within our definitions. Uh, and the proposal, the proposed language is essentially to make those definitions consistent with uh, with the general statutes nineteen A dash seventy seven. So what we're proposing is uh through amendments is to change the definitions of child daycare centers, uh group daycare homes uh and family daycare homes. Those three are defined in our regulations uh simply as being consistent um and uh uh mirroring the definition of Connecticut general statute nineteen A seventy seven. Um, all three, same uh, same, same thing. The other part of our definitions that we're, that we're amending um is essentially a more of a belt and suspender uh thing to, to, in which we, we formally uh go into our sections uh within the definitions for dwellings uh and, and essentially incorporate that in addition to the definition of dwellings, whether it's single family, uh, one family duplex or multiple family dwellings uh to add additional language uh that, that essentially says that uh the dwellings may also include the operation of a family child daycare home or group daycare home, again, as defined in the general statutes. Uh, so it's, it's essentially a, a mandated requirement really uh to get our regulations up to date with the uh new language in the, in the statutes.
Great, thank you. Um, can we open up the public hearing? Are we all set with that, Mark?
Yes, we're all set. Open it.
Okay, so I want to open up the public hearing for PL dash twenty four dash two, application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions daycare comma child. Uh, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the commission with respect to these uh amendments? I'm gonna ask two more times. Is there any member of the public wishing to adjust the commission with respect to twenty PL dash twenty four dash two application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions daycare comma child? Okay, and one more time, is there any member of the public here wishes to address the planning zoning commission with respect to PL dash twenty four dash two, application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions daycare comma child? I don't see anybody that is wishing to speak. Is there um a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing, Greg.
Okay, motion made by Tim Please Dale to close the public hearing. Seconded by
Seconded.
Tim Condorino, um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, and then uh we'll move back to item number five for the application review of PL dash twenty four dash two, application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the following section of the Waterford zoning regulation section one definitions daycare child. Um, is there any discussion on this? I think Mark put it um succinctly. It's kind of just conforming our regulations to mandates of the state statute. There's no discussion, we can have a motion?
I motion to approve application PL dash twenty four dash two to amend zoning regulation section one definitions for daycare and dwellings by adopting the findings one through four of the staff reports.
Great, thank you, Doris. Sir, a second?
Yep, there's also an effective date that we need to, uh, put forward to.
Uh, effective March twenty two, twenty twenty four?
Yeah, okay, is there a second to Doris's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion maybe Doris, seconded by Victor to approve twenty four dash two. Motion made by Doris, seconded by Victor to approve twenty-four dash two, all in favor? All in favor, great, um that's it, uh item number six, administrative review, is there anything um. Uh that you wanna update, actually, no, that's the next one, never mind, um. Administrative review, I guess, is basically if we can just see who else has comments to make with respect to the. Uh comprehensive plan, why don't we try to put a deadline of like March twenty-first to try to get comments in, that gives us three more weeks. To, for everyone to try to get comments in if they, if they have it, or if they wanna amend their previous comments, everybody good with that? Okay.
Yeah.
I can see everybody nodding except Tim, I, you say, Tim, yes?
I, I said, that sounds good, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm kind of in between rooms tonight, so I don't have my camera on.
No problem, okay, um item number seven, we received a letter from Lisa Kuntz. Um Dr. Kuntz to the Board of Selectmen of Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh item number eight, commission business, do you have any projects to talk about? Uh that we should know about or updates on existing projects? Mark or John?
Now, we may be receiving something uh for a. Uh special permit application on Hartford Turnpike, it's in as a preliminary application right now. It's gone through um Conservation Commission and has been approved by uh Conservation. This is a um, it's a business office located at eleven twenty-two and eleven twenty-four. Hartford Turnpike, this is up by the reservoir, uh near uh. Um up in that area of Hartford Turnpike, uh it's a business office for a company that does um land clearing. And it is East Lime Tree Service, uh looking to uh locate in Waterford.
Okay. Any other updates or anything?
Nope, none, none right now.
Okay, the item number nine, adjournment? Make a motion? Somebody? All right, Tim, I, I, I think Tim Bleesdale said motion to adjourn, so I, I'm not sure, but I think so, uh is there a second?
I'll second Tim's motion.
Seconded by Vic, uh all favor of adjourning? Great, this was a, this was a quick one, thirty-four minutes, so that's, that's great. All right, um so just, if you can, if we can try to get uh everything in by the March twenty-first, that'd be great, so we can move, move ahead with. Finalizing that, um I think we still have some work to do, but uh at least we can get some preliminary comments in, all right, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.